Welcome back everyone, this is Ren, once upon a time known as Drax Craven. And I have gone back in time and mended the timeline. Tenna has no longer been delivered to the Bluke household, but don't worry, that'll happen before the end of the adventure, one way or another. Okay. It's a locked cat flap. Upon further inspection, it seems it requires 3 codes. This information is useless. Okay, let's go to the holiday household.
Alright, we made it. Now where the hell's Noel? Ugh, I'm gonna get hungry waiting around. Chris, you got any snacks? That works, I guess.
Suzie, Chris, hi! Sorry I'm late, I just had to-
Yeah?
Um, is that... a rose?
This? Oh yeah, sorry. Oh shoot, did you want some? I can pick up the stem if you-
No, it's fine this way!
What, what, what? Okay, whatever.
Here's my house. Um, sorry, it's not much, but-
Dear sweet Jesus Christ... The hell, it's huge! I'm already getting lost just standing here!
Oh, really? Then, um, here, I'll show you around.
Noel joined your study group.
Huh. Is the Light World like a weird RPG dating sim? Maybe.
Welcome to my ho-ho-home!
Chris, let's start searching.
Um, okay, let's meet at the couch when you're done searching?
Hahaha, what the heck is this?
My mom collects them.
Okay, how the hell do you turn it off?
Um, just hold down the button. Though, for some weird reason, turning it off takes power. So it takes forever on the low battery ones.
Chris is start staring, super intense. This room has gotta be it. Sorry Noel, but we gotta go in here.
To- to the bathroom?
Damn it, Chris!
It's a tree that would potentially fall down if you climbed it. Hmm.
My mom just collects heart pillows for some reason. When Chris was little, they'd take one of these, then pretend to rip out their heart and chase me.
But my mom just loves red heart-shaped objects? Hmm... Click, yup, it's locked alright. Noel, you give it a shot.
Um, okay.
Why are we trying to open my parents' room? You and Suzie continue to try to open the locked door in front of Noel. Hahahaha! Dear lord.
Hey, what's in here? Looks, uh, suspicious.
Um, sorry, guests aren't allowed in there.
Cool, sounds, uh, suspicious. What's with the ninja shurikens? Shrakins!
Those are snowflakes, Suzie! We made them from paper in Toriel's class a long time ago.
Then why are they metal?
Oh, my mom had them bronzed. Huh.
It's Noel's homework desk. You took a pencil out of habit. A great hiding place, although it smells like detergent and deer.
What are these little, uh, wings in here?
Um, those? I've had those since I was a little kid. They're from when I was the angel in the holiday pageant. But I liked them so much, I just kept wearing them. Huh. It's-
We've been warned about the Angel's Heaven, and more than once, Noel has been alluded to be an angel.
Um... Maybe the Angel's Heaven is like some sort of encroaching frost?
It's a couch, for watching the TV. It's a state-of-the-art, high-definition TV with old game consoles under it.
Why do you have a flat screen in here?
Oh, um, yeah. Birdly keeps saying I should get a CRT.
It's Noel's bed. Under it is a metal CD with a photo of Noel in dark makeup.
Whoa, what the hell is this?
Um, Catty wanted a custom cover for her mix CD, so-
It's cool, you should, uh, do this look... more.
If you can get my mom to let me go grimdark.
She's not looking, Chris. Let's hack her computer for clues.
Uh, favorites history.
Alright, alright, Chris, click quietly. We are ninjas right now. Okay, favorites, paranormal, crime, paranatural... Oh hell, the freaking Skateboard Game? Hell yeah, woo-hoo!
Wh-what are you two doing?
Uh, shit, nothing, upgrading your computer.
You set her browser homepage to the Skateboard Game. CatPeters4.
Haha, CatPeters? The hell do you have this?
Um, excuse me, it's great! It's like a pet-raising game, but there's this, um, awesome bug that lets you get glitchy pets? I have a save file with like 7 headless cats.
Whoa, wait, can we see?
Um, after our project. Um, yeah, the Spampton Sweepstakes had like a whole blog post from Noel talking about her glitched CatPeters4 game. And... I- I- there's no way I can reproduce the post in any kind of fidelity.
It's a Christmas cactus. You remember its name? Christmas.
Um, this cactus? Birdly calls it Tsuntsun.
Do not click.
Phew, nearly dodged a hollow point bullet there.
Hey, what's that green dog puppet wallpaper?
Um...
Why is there so much bottled water in here?
Um, it's just convenient, you know?
Wait until she learns about the free water from the sink.
There wouldn't be so many Santas with dead batteries if Chris hadn't glued the cases shut trying to starve them. The house's back door, there's no need to leave. It's an empty gift box. It's an empty gift box. It's an empty gift box. It's an empty gift box.
Um, Chris, do you need to check all of these?
I mean, gotta admit, this room is kinda sus. Especially that vent.
Haha, nice reference, Suzie!
Huh, reference. I'll stop talking now. There, just for thoroughness sake. Oh, wait, hold on, what's this?
So, um, this is the snack tray?
Why, Noel, why did you slice the cheese into hearts?
I'd remember if you eat the wooden stick things. What the fuck is this? Thank you, Suzie! What the heck is this?
Um, it's a holiday treat catcher, you know? Anyone wanna tell me it's normal to have one? Nobody?
It's a thermostat. The only option is cold. The fridge is packed with festive foods, and a jar of pickles. The sink is sparkling clean.
Anyone gonna say anything about the giant sword?
Oh, it's just my mom's katana. Normal knives aren't enough for dad's fruitcake.
In the cupboard are cutters for gingerbread monsters. But none for gingerbread humans.
Um...
Whoa, you play piano?
Um, no, we just kind of, um, have one.
No one really plays it anymore. It's a highly climbable-looking tree. Hmm. I don't think there's anything more to do, so I think it's project time. Start the study session?
Yes. Okay, should we, um, get started?
Oh, uh, yeah, sure.
Um, so what are your projects about?
Oh, well, uh-
Sorry, um, phone call, I'll be just a second. Hi, Birdly, what's up? Um, uh, sure, of course I'm alone. Um, sure, I bet I do look quite servine this fine evening. If it's about the notes, I already highlighted them for you, so- Wh-what? You want me to go on a date to the festival with you? Um, I mean, sure, I'd be glad to.
Be your player 2.
She's not going to the festival, you dumbass!
Suzie?
Look, you don't really wanna go with him, right? Some people aren't gonna get it- Some people aren't gonna get it until you scream "no!" Did you forget that or something?
Yeah. Yeah, you're right! I shouldn't be afraid to tell Birdly how I really feel. Next time, I- I should be honest. Next time, I should- I should shake his neck and scream at him! So, uh, haha, where did you throw my phone anyway?
Chris, I'll keep her busy, you go look for clues. Don't worry, Noel's not finding her phone for a while. You make like a dog and find some clues, go! This is like the fourth reference to Chris being a puppy. Why does this keep happening?
Oh, um, Chris, it might take a while to, um, find my phone, so, um, you don't have to wait around here. You know, you could, um, go in a different room.
It's Noel's phone. You can still hear a voice on the other end. Answer it? Of course. You can still hear Birdly distantly talking to himself. Oh sweet rotisserie Santa, the nightmare has become real! Suzie hurting Noel just to stop her from going with her. She's... She's gone yandere for me.
Oh heavens to yikes, where's my Dragonblazer's barf bag?
But, now that I think about it, she must be very lonely. A poor girl with no one to show her exclusive tips and tricks. Hello, are you still there? Listen, it disgusts me to say this, but as an act of charity, I will let you be the breeze under my wings. You, me, the festival. No, it's fine. I will go with Birdly. Ch-Chris? You? The phone, you? Chris, I have to say, I am flattered. But if you want my hand, you'll have to fight for it. On the day of the festival, you, Noel, and Suzie, the lover who impresses me the most, will be my date. Chris, may the best suit her. Epic win! Good luck! Click. It's Noel's phone. Okay. Um... Well, the 2 places that we want to investigate are Carol's room, but it's locked. And... this room. Oh. Okay. It's a shelf. In the front are the holiday-themed games and movies, and at the back are all the scary games you never got to play. It's a computer. The monitor is unplugged. It's Des's bed. Underneath are army rations, guitar picks, paintball gear, ice skates, and a badly-traced drawing of a dragon. Hmm. It's a CD player. Underneath are a ton of punk rock CDs, and one still sealed ska CD. It's a box of odds and ends. Dig through?
Yes.
You dug through the box and found: A couple of burnt lighters, rusted multi-tool knives, expired rations, walkie-talkies, loose binoculars, a pair of shoes fit for hooves, violent comic books, paintballs, a cracked hockey mask, frayed yarn, and buttons. Your brother's retainer, and old mint cans with unique leaves inside of them. Okay. Des and Azrael were closer than we might think. A violin, a flute, a microphone. They all look very expensive and very dented. Rollerblades, wiffle bat. Looking at these things makes your head hurt. Well, we do know that Des did hit Chris with the wiffle bat, so it might just be that. It might be a deeper heart sickness. But, here's the guitar. It's a red guitar. There's a code taped to the inside? It says "shelter". Well, I should take it. You leaned down to look inside the guitar. You began to read the numbers in the passcode. 1... 2... Hmm. It appears Chris does not want us to know. Perhaps not the most secure prison. After all, there is an extremely sus vent over here. Hmm, our vision is quite limited in this form. Hmm. What a vent network. Hmm. Why, why does this... I guess it's a big house, it needs to have a whole ventilation system for it, you know? Hmm. I don't know why, but I feel like it will be important. Oh! If there's a vent in all of these bedrooms, then there's probably a vent in Carol's room. I choose to call it Carol's room, because it seems she's the only one using it, you know? Ooh, another sword? A conspiracy board, maybe? Interesting. Okay. Hmm. Sorry, the idea of the board putting together information... Leads me to believe that whoever is in there doesn't know as much about what's going on as they'd like to seem. Dark Fountain, next. Suzie must not get guitar. Need soul. Without soul, Chris will... Suzie guitar code stop. Police sacrifice next week. Church tonight. Chris, dark world, no soul, can't.
Just let the kid drink his ch- I'm sorry, oh no! Just let the kid drink their chalky milk!
Poor Chris. They've just got so much going on, they're in way over their head. Oh! Dum-de-dum! Phew, cleaning up sure works up an appetite. I wonder if the kitchen has any treats for me? No, not now, I can't afford to take a break. Huh. Now, more than ever, I need to concentrate. To settle this once and for all. I've got to go look again. Huh. Well... Really feels like Chris is in over their head. So in over their head. We're almost there, aren't we, old friend? This time for sure, Tori will finally see. See what really happened. That I just wanted to protect everyone. And this time, she'll have to believe me. They all will. Then... We'll all be a happy family again, won't we? The church is beautiful, isn't it? This black shard. Huh. Okay. BS. Chris seems in way over their head. They're working on some sort of bizarre conspiracy? Oh nooo. Poor creature. Oh, moving it does make us move faster. Ooh, what's in the b- crap. Oh, I can hit the bells! But I don't think I can examine anything? I don't think I can open that door. Oh, that's weird. I- I exist in isometric! Ooh! So, uh-
Um, looks like it's just the 2 of us.
Damn, kinda awkward without Chris here.
Why do I wish Chris was here? Do you hear something from the basement?
Damn, hope it's not the severed hand. Haha, is that a Bloodcrusher's 2 reference? Huh? Dude, you actually know it?
Of course, it's like a super-duper classic! One day, the protagonist wakes up without a hand, then like they hear music playing in the basement, and when they go down, it starts attacking them and stuff? Jesus, yeah! That was so freaking-
I don't know what this thing is, but I don't like it. You know, I never like saw the original, only 2.
Gosh, really? Well, I have the box set, do you wanna watch it together?
Dude, that would be awesome!
Yeah, gosh, I used to watch it like religiously. It'd be nice to have someone to watch it with again.
What about, uh, Catty? Doesn't she like scary stuff?
Um, well, she just takes it a little seriously. Like analyzes all the magic and stuff, it's a little-
Haha, that's wicked annoying!
Um, no, no, but... yes. Oh, you wanna know what else this reminds me of? So there's this guy that gets really mad about games, and he made this goofy horror series? About this bucket with Icy's face that tries to kill him? Um, have you seen that one?
No.
Oh, well, I think maybe it's okay if you haven't.
Dude, let's watch that too.
Really? Haha, I have it saved on my phone here!
Hell yeah. Haha, there's rules!
I have like a whole playlist!
Cool. Oh gracious. Leave some room for Jesus!
It's nice just being quiet next to her.
Feels cool just... just chilling and not even needing to talk.
Feel like that might be the end of this conversation, and that's okay.
Dude, the lights! Did like the power go out?
Ah, Chris! We know what you're doing one of your stupid pranks!
Let's go fix the breaker. Hmm. Makes me wonder now exactly... Oh, that's weird. Makes me wonder exactly how many of Chris's pranks are the result of something... Oh god! Oops, knocked the tree over.
Um, sorry, dad didn't clean the basement this year. Anyways, the breaker's down here somewhere. You know wha- Oh my gosh, this just brushed against my leg!
What the hell is it?
It's- it's an angel doll.
It- it was goddamn moving! Okay, ready to kill. I got a cane, you... you're gonna beat to death with a cookie pan?
No, no, I'm just going to-
Huh? Dude, you've got guts!
There's probably just like... A mouse underneath it, right? It's nothing to be afraid of.
Damn.
Dude, wait, wait a second.
Huh?
Something else followed us from the basement.
Huh? What?
The severed hand!
Suzie! You meanie!
Heh, gotcha! Okay, what do we do? Throw it out?
Um, let's think about it first. If it's a mouse... Ooh, I can't move from their clutches. It could be cute as a pet.
Heh, alright, and if it's a severed hand, I'll keep it as my pet.
Haha, wait, let me raise it too.
Sure, we'll raise it together.
It's funny, I was so nervous earlier. I've never actually hung out with you, you know? But so far, it just kinda feels like I don't even know why I was nervous. It just feels like I already know you.
Yeah, I, uh, feel the same. It's pretty cool, I guess.
It's just strange, it feels like- it feels like you're the same as in my dream.
Uh, what was your dream about me like?
Huh? Oh, I, um... I mean, uh, I think I have to- I have to go find, um, my old hamster cage!
Hey, wait, I wanna hear about your dream! Don't move a goddamn inch.
Oh, I am absolutely moving all the inches. You think I'm missing out on this hot goss? You don't know who the fuck you're dealing with! Hmm, interesting. I can't go through any of these doors, but I could probably go through an open one.
Oh, well I could look at the guitar- oh, fuck!
They do have a reputation for hiding under beds.
Did you just hear that? It sounded like a guitar.
Huh? Well, it's probably just Chris, like the other stuff. Oh hell dude, it's gone! The angel fell over! That thing could be anywhere!
It had to have been coming from... Um, in here, but-
Well hey, let's go!
Well hey, let's go. Hmm, it's quiet now. Yeah, well, it's probably scared of us. Suzie, touching that isn't- Let's just chill out, if it's gonna come out, we'll hear it. Yeah, you're right. We'll know it's there if it makes noise. So, uh, what happened next in your dream? Um, so we were all riding on roller coasters, and you, Chris, and this boy was there. Chris's costume was kind of, um- Was my coaster cool? Um, yeah, it had like flames on it. Heh, yeah! Honestly, the boy was strange though. Huh? Why? He looked like, he looked a little like Azrael? You know, Chris's brother, but not. Yeah, I mean, he does kinda look like Chris's mom. Huh? From, uh, what you just said, he would. Right, it just makes me wonder why. In the end, I got so overwhelmed, I stopped questioning it. I ended up, I ended up being in a large city with Chris. What was interesting is that Chris just, Chris just acted, not like their normal self. They acted just like they do recently, I guess. Huh, Chris seems pretty normal to me. And everything was, I guess it was, almost like a game or something? Encountering enemies, finding treasure, stuff like that. Huh, never thought of it like that. And Chris, even though they kept looking at me, like they wanted to say something, everything that came out of their mouth sounded odd. Like it was like on a speaker or something? Sounds like normal Chris to me. Well, it wasn't. Something was weird. I think Chris is just weird, period. Yeah, sometimes they mumble, sometimes they yell, but sometimes it's like, dude, I don't know why, but like... For some reason, they're really, really good at flirting. Huh? Wha- what makes you say that, Suzie? Uh, never mind. Haven't you like seen them flirt with people? Blushing Chris? With who? Like, uh, enemies. What enemies? Dude, I don't know, I'm just thinking like, damn, I should get flirting lessons from them. Oh, flirting lessons from Chris? Haha, sounds like fun. Uh, I mean, you're also invited. Am I that bad? Um, Suzie, I don't think, think Chris would teach me that. Damn, guess it'll just be the three of us then. Who's three? Oh, you know, uh, damn it, you know, um... So there's this boy that goes to, uh, another school, and I wanted him to come to the festival, but- You were thinking of going together? Yeah, but you know, he can't go, cuz of like other school stuff. Huh. I mean, don't get any weird ideas or anything, he just doesn't really get included much, so... What the heck? That's really sweet of you, Suzie! So I noticed like, there's like, this photo of you and Chris on the wall? Oh my gosh, that's so old, I forgot about it! I didn't know you were like, um, close, I guess. We, I mean, we, we're just neighbors, so, I mean... We just ended up seeing each other a lot, that's all. Okay, but like in the photo, you're like, kinda like riding a Ferris wheel together? Haha, yeah, it was kinda just, you know, forced. So riding a Ferris wheel together doesn't mean anything, huh? Um, maybe not if it's like, just like a forced thing? Oh. I mean, yeah, obviously, I mean, it's just a stupid ride. So if theoretically it was somebody else, it wouldn't? I mean, maybe it's more about how the two people in the wheel feel. So maybe even if it's forced, then... Okay, cool. So, how did you feel back then? Well, Chris was quiet and staring out the window, and suddenly out of nowhere, they shook the whole thing, and I screamed, and then they turned to me and smiled. So is that good or bad? Um, I don't remember, I was just a kid. So, uh, anyway, let me ask one more thing, about your dream. Um, sure. Was there any part with, uh, I mean, just the two of us and... Well, in my dream, you did have this cute tail. Huh? Uh, okay, well, uh, sorry your dream was, uh, stupid and fake with that part. Then what's wagging behind her? Let's just shut up for a while. Okay. Darn it! Oh, okay, they've got to- Ooh, they also get tired out from, from throwing that hockey stick around. Oh, Jesus Christ! Wait a sec. Dude, stop making so much goddamn noise! You're supposed to be searching for clues, dumbass! Hey, uh, sorry about that, I, uh- Suzie, that guitar, you, your- Huh? Should I put it back? Um, well... No. No, it's, I think you should play it. Me? Sure, sure, I can give it a shot. Let's, uh, just go somewhere else, though. Um, okay. Suzie guitar? I'll be right there. Oh! You're, you okay, Chris? Guess so. It's a hockey puck, looks like it would hurt. Okay. So they call someone, tell them that Suzie got the guitar, and then they're like... It feels like, if their goal was to keep us away from the guitar, and they utterly failed, there's no reason to keep the soul out of their body anymore, you know what I mean? Like everything's already fucked. Hey, just so you know, me and Chris were in a band, so don't be surprised if I'm pretty good. Oops. Sure you wanna hear this? Huh? Yeah, of course, I, I just always liked listening to someone play. Heh, okay, check this out. Dude, I actually kinda kicked ass with that one. Haha, can we get an encore? Heh, just for my fans. Shut up, that was the remix. Man, today's been awesome. Not to be weird or anything. Um, it's, it's not weird at all. I really like hanging out with you too, Suzie. Sweet, maybe we could like, I don't know, hang out again tomorrow or something? Uh, unless you're busy. Um, no, I'm not busy, it's just, tomorrow is, well, it's the festival, Suzie. Oh, yeah, I, uh- Would you, would you want to go together? I... The lights? Oh yes, someone had turned them off. Um, hello, Mr. Dreamer. I don't mean to interrupt your schoolwork, but... Is that a snack tray? Um, yes, feel free to have some. Don't mind if I do. Phew, cleaning sure does work up an appetite. Figured I'd get it in a bite before your mother's home. Oh, well, um, there's no rush, you know, she has work, she's not gonna be home for hours. What do you mean? I just saw her outside the window. Mom? Mom is? Suzie, I, Suzie, I'm sorry, I think you should- Oh god. Hello, Carol! Interesting, she makes the same, she uses the same walking sound effect that Chris does. Mom, you! Get your hands off that guitar! Hey, what's with your- She, she didn't know, I, I was the one who gave her the guitar. I told her to play it, I just, I just wanted to hear it again, and she's not a bad person, mom. Noel. Kitchen, now. Hey, listen, Noel didn't do anything wrong, it's my fault, I took the guitar and- Leave. What? You are not welcome. Leave. And don't talk to my daughter again. Hey, I can- Suzie, just, just go. Well, guess who's taking your daughter to the festival tomorrow, you jerk? Um, I'll be in the kitchen! Asgore, if you're going to eat the snack tray, do it outside. Yes, Carol? No reason to go in there. Hmm. I can't really go anywhere, can I? No, alright, all I seem to be able to do is leave. You felt something like ice on your shoulder. My apologies about just now, Chris. As you know, you are welcome here anytime. Well, that was awkward. The hell was up with her mom? Everything was going great until she stepped in, then the room dropped like five degrees. The code, Chris, we forgot about the code! Damn, it's all her fault! There, there, don't worry too hard about things, Carol is lovely once you get to know her. Uh, yeah, I bet. So, uh, what are you two up to now? Um, we're probably gonna go back to Chris's house? Ah, I see, home is where the heart is. May I offer either of you a cheesed cracker? You know what? Sure. Delicious, aren't they, Chris? Yeah, actually, thanks. Ta ta for now, have a great day, Chris. As a matter of fact, the platter lacks snacks. Did you need something, Chris? Outfit. Ah, yes, Carol and I have been working together, she's been funding my flower store, and in exchange... You know, it's funny, gardening was always my hobby, never my job, so selling what I grow has been tough. Flowers are for people you love, giving them away just seems natural, doesn't it? Are you okay? Oh, better than ever, with the festival tomorrow. I'm expecting record sales for my flowers, with a bit of extra cash, I'll be back on my feet, and ready to serve my own snack platter for you and Azzy. There might even be some leftovers for your mother. Ugh. Nothing. Have a good one, Chris. God damn it. Hey, hey, Chris, I didn't wanna say it near your dad, but... I saw it. I saw it in the guitar. There was a code for the shelter. Didn't get to write it down, but, damn it, we were so close to something. Guess we just gotta try again tomorrow. Hmm, yeah, sure. Well, uh, what the hell do we do now? Great, now it's raining, at least your house is close, let's go. Actually, can we go and visit the school? I would like to visit Castle Town, please. Hey, we haven't seen Ralcey today. Think we should go to, go to school and check on him? Yes. Yeah, let's go. I don't care if we're soaking wet. Chris, wait a sec, let's go get Tena. Alright, let's go! Ralcey! Suzie, Chris, welcome back, I missed you. Yeah, yeah, hey, let me talk about something. Remember that cop last night, Undine? The knight took her and locked her in the shelter south of town. We gotta get her out, but the door is solid steel, there's no way we can break in, so now we're looking for the codes for the lock. We thought Noel's mom might have one, but- Are you worried about her, Undine? Me? A cop like her? Hell no! You know, it's just that- Don't worry, Suzie, someone strong like her will be okay. I want this place to be a place where you can forget about the real world for just a little while. Just relax, okay? And if anything tough happens, I'll come help you too as fast as I can. Thanks, Ralcey. If it's any consolation, I don't sense any immediate danger. If the knight's only goal was to hurt people, they would've acted sooner, right? For now, let's make sure no one else gets taken. Yeah, alright. Heh, what's with you, making me feel better? I like you too, Suzie! Yeah, alright, knock it off with a stupid voice! Why? Woo woo! I should not have taught him that! I'm trying to scam this guy using a children's game, but his controller keeps malfunctioning. Is this guy a genius? Is he on to me? I'm the hacker, I'm a pro gra- pro gamer, too, keep it on the download. Shh, I got the mods on deck, I'm about to win it big. He's using a notched controller to play what looks like a child's game. The rubble on the ground seems to have been dusted and polished, someone around here really cares about the details. Ooh, Ralcey lost his point of guts. Records and faces the fate. Carries out fate with the blade. Suzie's guts has increased incredibly. And her attack is almost as great as mine with the dark shard. Chris's guts has gone up as well. Hmm. I don't know why, but I like to pay attention to those gutsy increases. Hey, Lancer. Woo! Lancer piggyback ride! Monf, monf, such is the way of the worm. Look guys, it's in the wrist, the wrist. You wanna be part of the fan club? You gotta get good at fanning. A powerful computer like our Lady Grace needs powerful fans. Good point. This is a great town, all my friends are here, and ready to blow big bucks-
And ready to blow big bucks! Still, I can't help but feel like I haven't seen... What? Nothing! Bye, bye! Looking for originality, innovation? Then click no further than Addison's. Our new Fungadero will have your whole family funning around town!
Hmm.
Damn, nice outfit, Ralce. I didn't have anything to do with this.
Huh... It reacts to your presence.
I went too far with my training. My legs have achieved a kind of ultra instinct, where they can lead their own independent life without me.
Though I'm just a small ball, with friends, I have become more well-rounded than ever before. It seems to be locked. It may never open again. I'm not so sure of that. Yeah, it looks like the Addisons dressed up the Ralce doll to look more... Look or at... Or be more Spampton-like?
Ah, the return of Piggyback Lancer! To the party dojo!
This song is so sweet, Captain. So sweet. You made it for us? It's awful. Nothing.
Hey, boss, thought the dojo could use some new beats? Maybe something a little romantic, like for the mademoiselles?
Oh, I see.
I didn't know there was a three-for-one babes deal in this town, boss. I'm gonna give these fine ladies the reverse tiss of a lifetime.
I just love boys. Boys are great! Uh-huh.
This new romantic style of dojo is difficult to me.
Hey, apparently you met my friends, the other Pippinses? Yeah, they're actually losers, guess I hyped them up a bit.
Hey, oh. I'm Love Master. Don't ask me about loves, ask.
Alright, love is when two people fight in a dojo together. Did I get that right?
Don't ask, thanks.
Boss, I'm sorry, but welcome to the love dojo. No, it's still the same as before, you still fight, but now the music is just overtly sentimental. And I don't like it, but now you can only fight lovers. Boss, you wanna do battle with lovers? Challenge! La Niño and El Nina for an executive buffet!
The forecast shines with a soft romantic glow. Sunglasses blocks bullets, telescope also blocks bullets, let's check them out. Ice action. La Niño. With both of them. The sight of El Nina makes him want to be singing in the rain. Suzie dreamed of sunny days, Ralce hoped for starry nights. Tonight's weather is... Moon, glorious moon. Ow! There we go. Whew, our stats went up bigly. Uh... Sunglasses? You looked at the sky and took sunglasses. Tonight's weather is... Drop. Oh, and the more shots that I block with the glasses, the more mercy that they gain. Interesting. Well, let's telescope. Shinorous crystal. Okay, so certain types of things can only block certain types of attacks. Interesting. And I would want this to capture the moisture drops, right? Interesting. Looks like it's all telescope for a while.
So you've caught on to our forecast, nice work, you little shun-sunshines! But winning us over won't be that easy. Here comes the rain.
Oh god! Okay. Oh, so I've got to bounce the cloud without getting shocked. Whew! Yes!
They're just hyping each other up, just trying to survive!
Okay.
Ha-ha, nice try, but the weather's only warming up. El Nina, tell them what's next!
Wait, can I just say that we are doing so amazing right now?
Oh, El Nina, you're amazing, amazingly cool, that is.
And I love the romantic music they have in the dojo.
Oh, El Nina, me too, me too!
Anyway, here's our last attack. The two celestial bodies, the perfect forever couple! Sixty? You want me to bounce it sixty times? Alright. Oh, so only the cloud creates the sort of electronic reaction when it hits the bottom. Ah, ah! Why is there a lamp? What is happening?
Come on, keep it together!
Wow, again, perfect chemistry without attack, just perfect! Oh, I felt it, I felt sparks flying! Me too, ha-ha! Except for... Except for that lamp. Yeah, that was really weird. Yeah, I didn't like that. It did make the attack stronger. It did. But it was weird. We didn't like it.
I think?
What? It was bad. Yeah. Probably.
What?
Battle's over. An amazing battle! As promised, here is your reward. You received the executive buffet.
Sweet.
Oh, Jesus Christ, this place is bopping!
Hey, boss, I'll have a dark candy starfei.
Cathy's going to order a heart foam latte.
Hey, boss, I'll have a dark candy starfei.
Okay. Lemonade, please? The Taskmaster is going crazy. Much to my chagrin, it seems we've become a cat cafe. What is it that I must say? Nyah, was it? I hope it is to your liking, would you like anything else? Recommendation: For the young human, we recommend the tiramisu cat ears. Wait, what'd he say? Good day, boss, or rather, nyah. Check recruits. Pop-up. By Rarokun. Then we have, oh, can we put them? Dislikes being alone. Well, obviously, La Niño and El Nina must be at the s- at, at, at the, at the same table. Like with water, though. A Pippins, oh, we need... Likes small talk, dislikes feeling contained. Verbal. Likes creative, dislikes business. Dislikes the word ugly. Just the darkener, ooh-la-la. Dislikes having their buttons pushed. Seems to just be enjoying the musical ambiance. Seems to like you're invited, it seems like you're invited for drinks, but you're missing now. Did it hurt when you fell? Your tag says you're, um, the moon.
Oh my rain, you put me on cloud nine, which is the best cloud, of course.
Oh ho, welcome home! Things have changed again here in Ren Town. Your town's love is strong. Beauty grows in your heart. Let's see to a mer- let's see to a merciful life.
Oh, Commander, ahem, what lovely amenities you have provided. Would you like a sip of water? It's delicious as expected. It seems visibly agitated. This guy really annoys me, just because he's a higher level. He thinks he could chat up the water cooler, get real. You've been sparing all Newbert's friends. Now they're your friends, too.
That's good. When you spare people, this world moves up. Newbert moves up, too.
Heh-heh, welcome travelers. Ah, I know what you're going to say. Now, now, there's no shame in it. You fought the knight, didn't you? Well, we all know there's no winning there. What? You got the shadow crystal? I see. So you were able to recover the shadow mantle? That's odd. Chris, where did you even find it? Well, never mind that. You got the crystal, that's all that matters. Now you've got three, only two more and we should have enough. To make something I think you'll quite enjoy. Now, good luck, and I'll be taking that shadow crystal.
I can buy CD bagels, dark burgers, amber swords, boogie swords, nothing... Interesting note.
It's strange, by all reasonable means, the strength of your next opponent should be enough to already ring the bell on your defeat. But for some reason, I can't help but think you might win.
What is this feeling? Hope?
Ha-ha, whatever it is, it's quite funny.
Hmm. See you again, or not. Heh-heh-heh. The music shop is closed, everyone's busy at this time.
Boss, why don't you let this weakling retire, huh? He served me tea when I asked for something tough. Sorry, this swatcho' guy I mean, not Ralce, he's fine.
Ribbit, ribbit. It's supporting Zapper out of fear. It's doing its best to cheer Swatchling on. Doki-doki, sukri. Oh, boss, you know I respect your decisions, but this Zapper creature you recruited is a bit- I have everything handled, so why not let him retire?
Mama Miba, welcome to Top Bakery. Our special chef's been baked goods at the top of their class. Hanafuda, I think it will be my turn to bake next time.
Lancer cookies from organic free-range lancers, free! I now pronounce you cookie and wife.
Thank you.
I just learned what bread is. Hua-ha, I was stealing my hand at new fusions. I realized the forbidden technique, bread. I realized the forbidden technique, gluten intolerance. Because of this, I have not developed any new recipes. If only a true master of bread existed.
Uh, fix sauce.
Your body is a weapon, you must take care of it from time to time. Hua-ha, let's feel my technique!
Uh, fuse items. Dee-dee burger, silver cards, twin ribbon! Could I have two twin ribbons? The twisted sword. Um, sure. Two twin ribbons it is, can I even equip that? Is that a thing that can happen? That's it, can my gray's area get even bigger? Wait, funky music emerges from the cafe and fills the town. You're filled with the power of a funky town. Gracious. Ooh-la-la, what are we doing, the wildlife? We are doing the wildlife fashion shoot! So adorable, admirable. Photo pose. I see. Can you make a cheesecake this time? Um, let's head upstairs first. The door is locked. What is this door supposed to be? BF, living quarters for bad guys. It's doing an absolutely reprehensible job of protecting the jail. Hark, the other kings realized you can just go out the back of this thing? Pish and posh, was I really the only serious one about being imprisoned? That's fine, Golden Sam, the cage whose head you can talk to, and I are fine. I'm Golden Sam. I'm going to leave soon, too. Oh no! The kings and animals left to seek their fortune. What a drag, what a drag. Only a single crown remains.
Don't cry, Papa, this jokester will make your belly laugh like jelly.
A new court jester, eh? Hmm, let us see it.
Hey, Kingy Doodle, it's me! The new funny Mr. Antenna! I can do dances, prances, practical jokes, clean your son's ears! Hey, what did the playing card say to the television?
Hmm. Leave.
Ah, he, uh, he did, huh? Ha-ha, tough audience today, uh, folks. Maybe I was, uh, too modern. Too relevant. Whoops, I tripped! Hey, don't levitate my misfortune, I-
Good work, son. I like this one.
Ha-ha, I mean, uh, they like me, they really like me!
What? Jester. It was he, the clown, that told me of the knight's brilliance. About the fountain's glory and how I would rise to power. Funny little man, how his jokes and dances made us chuckle. A shame he had to be tricked away by his closest companion. The magician, Shom, whose smile has gone empty since that day. What? Talk about the knight. Soon you will meet your demise by the knight's hand. We lived, idiot. What? You met the knight? Ah-ha, a rare show of mercy, I suppose. With their full strength, you'd be splattered, ha-ha-ha. What were they like?
Um, they seemed a little...
A little? A little what? You know, a little, you know? A little what? Draw a picture, wench! Begone.
Hmm. Interesting. Second floor, living quarters, third floor, extended living quarters, no! Um, I have a surprise for you two, if we could go in your rooms?
Huh? Our rooms, they're combined?
Um, just for today, I thought we could use the space. For a tea party!
Heh, a tea party? Hit me, I guess. Hey, this is pretty good.
Thanks, I got help from Swatch. Chris, would you like any? Two lumps, please.
There.
Um, and here's the tea.
It's kinda funny, I-I always thought tea parties were for wimps. I mean, don't get me wrong, they still are, but... Just feels like when I'm with you guys, I don't even need to think about that.
Aw, Suzie!
Guess your stupid attitude's been rubbing off on me. Like, I don't wanna say I've been getting soft, but... I just always had to be tough, you know? Now it just feels like I... Have options.
Aw-ha, Suzie! You've changed so tremendously since I met you. No, rather, you've finally just been able to be yourself. I feel... I feel... Just so proud of you, Suzie.
Yeah, you've changed too, dude.
I have?
Before, you were all stuck up about being good, right? Now, you're actually kinda normal sometimes.
I suppose I just started appreciating you more, Suzie. For example, I thought your rude buster was scary before, but now, I think it's really... Um... Bad bum.
Just say badass, idiot. You gonna eat a piece, or what?
Huh? No, that's for you two, ha-ha.
Dude, you made it. You get to have some.
Um, okay. Oh, this is really yummy!
Why the heck are you so surprised?
I, I've actually never eaten cake before, since I was making it for you two after all. I can't believe it tastes this good!
Ha-ha, dude, you're such a weirdo sometimes. Just have the rest.
No, I couldn't. Hmm... Ralce, eat the cake. Um, okay, just, um, later. I'm a bit embarrassed how much I liked it.
Anyways, that was kinda fun. Thanks, Ralce. Chris, we should do something for Ralce sometime.
Hmm, well...
Nice, still got my rock and roll outfit.
A chair, it is not yet- A chair. It has not yet been given a name. Suzie's fridge, perfectly stocked by someone else. Suzie's bed, perfectly made by someone else.
Dude, you gonna leave your slice half-eaten?
Um, I'll deal with it when we leave the room.
Heh, you got tons of awards here. Not the best one, though, right, Chris?
Huh? What's the best one?
Just the super cool one Chris got today.
Really? Congratulations, Chris!
Yeah, congrats.
It's a drawer. It's full of green crayons.
Hey, what happened to our stuff?
Um, I placed it all in storage. Don't worry, I'll bring it back next time. What? It is receiving enrichment from tamping the soft soil.
Psst, it's me, the hacker. I'm gathering queen queens for a secret life hack. Get a terrarium for your computer and you can touch grass as you game.
Hmm, what am I doing, boss? Oh, just gathering worms, you see? Don't tell anyone, but I kind of want to work for that rules card. Careful.com, pretty boy. This room site is a work zone. What happened to the wall? I don't know, but we're not stopping till we hit buried treasure!
Good idea.
Wha- what treasure? Get load of the guy with no meat or fruit in his castle walls! I-I'm sorry, I'm just new at this. I'm new!
Me and the prince king are building enrichment enclosures for the townsfolk.
Wow, what a great normal thi- nice thing to do! Huh. Weird. Feels like... I don't know. Like digging into the black space created this? I don't know. The bulldozer is receiving enrichment from its surroundings. Fair enough. Suzie, can you enrich my enclosure?
Uh, I can punch a hole in drywall and hide toys inside.
Thank you. Someday, I will do the same for you.
Alright.
Queen's room. Queen shall notice my brilliance another any day now. Something about that lamp's brightness level, it seems low. Huh. The lampshade. Chris, Suzie, how do you like my new... room? Do you want a sip?
Uh, that's acid, we'd die.
Oh dear, first you don't want to swim in the free pool, now you don't want to drink the free pool water. More for me, I suppose. Wow, this tune is banging! Who made it? I made it. Looks like Head Hathi's trying computer dating. Looks like Wereware Wire's trying computer dating. Hmm. Looks like a touring band. They only do the touring part, though. Aww, can't leave that off. Good luck, have fun, gentlemen. The TV guy shall notice my brilliance any day now. Gee, haha, what a stupid-looking lamp, folks! Like, the lamp itself is stupid! It also has a small ass!
What did those say about moi?
My hot-burning meteoric hunk, I feel so on fire with you. Almost as hot as the lampshade when it crested my hair. I don't know how I felt about that. I wanna forget it, I think. My sweet frozen sundae, our relationship has never been more solid. Except, I think the lamp put its hand on mine, and it made me feel funny, but we will ignore that for love. Hmm... hmm, just saying, just saying, maybe the throuple could work out. Maybe, maybe rules card, you know, just saying. I mean, they think he's hot, just, maybe it could work. Oh, Prince Ralce, look how many hats I've racked up! Uh, your original hat? I seem to have lost it forever.
This room is funky and funny. It may not be my forever home, but for now, you're really great hosts. Not as great a host as me, but what can you do? Hacha, hacha, don't touch that podium, folks, or TV Time Season 2 will begin. You don't want episodic content that deteriorates in quality over time, do ya? Do ya? Hey, what's that room over there? Your room?
Um, sorry, it's still really dusty and dirty, so...
So what?
So you can't go inside until I clean it?
Come on, what are you hiding that's that embarrassing? Last one, there's a fresh egg.
Suzie, wait! Hmm, relegated to pure shadow. It's... It's empty? My own room? I-I don't need a room. At least, that's what I thought. So, I never...
You, you live here. Why do we have rooms and not you?
Making you two happy is my purpose. I, if I think about it, there's no reason for me to have anything.
That's the stupidest goddamn thing I ever heard. You see this stupid excuse for a room? I don't care what the reason is. Me and Chris are gonna fill it up, wall to wall, until you have the most badass room in the castle. Suzie? Look, you can't be the only one with an empty room. It's... It's too sad, you know? Wherever we go, we'll keep an eye out for furniture, right, Chris? Come on.
Chris, Suzie's so nice, it makes my heart hurt. I don't really have any hobbies or interests. Baking, sewing, singing, those are all just things I thought to do for you two. But recently, I'm starting to feel like, like I'm developing my own opinions, my own likes, my own dislikes, my own desires, my own fears. Please tell me, should I... should a Darkner be feeling like this? Please be yourself. I, I... Chris, hearing that from you, I might just...
Alright, furniture piece number one.
Thanks, Suzie.
Let's go, Chris.
Could you please take this one back? The curtains are fluttering. By process of elimination, this is the best thing in Ralce's room. This was my first possession, just for me. Since you gave it to me, I hold it every night. Perhaps it sounds silly, but since then, my, my first selfish desire was, I want more plushies! A perfectly reasonable thing to want. I wouldn't know anything about that. Alright, let's visit the TV center real quick.
Hey, Chris, let's make Ralce a cake next time, just to help me find the ignition on this thing. Hello, boss, welcome to TV studio. Here you can play various mini-games. They have no effect on anything, so just enjoy yourself and relax.
Mike. Mike's room. It seemed to be locked for the code. Enter it? I do not know the code. So there's no way I could enter it. Hmm. I think it's time for us to depart. Farewell, Ralce. Even the rug. Right, the rug was important. There are aspects to the rug. Tem study harp, tem learn, tem learn how to sing! Oh god. Huh.
Hey, what's with the egg at Birdley's desk? Never mind, I don't wanna think about this.
Fair enough. Ah, soggy footy prints. Is there something over here? There is! Splash, splash, rain is the best weather for puddles, I'm splashing out! I'm just a kid and don't know all the weathers, but I'm splashing out! Okay. Let's deliver Tenna to the Bluke family, and then we'll go to Chris's house next time on Delta and Chapter 4. Thank you so much for joining me, everyone.